We're not going to waste any time tonight. It's summertime, it's moving outside here, I know you all want to go.
To the side of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, is visible with the routine and justice for all.
So we have Emery's way back there recording attendance. We are up here with the exception of Dr. Shereen. Sorry. Okay, so with that, we will start with visitor comments.
Yes.
Please start with visitor comments. Do we have visitors?
Yes. Linda, I'm going to mispronounce a lot of things. Zapats? Zapats?
Hi, I'm Linda Zapats. I'm a forty-eight-year resident of Southern Lehigh School District. I have two children come through here. And I'm here to speak about the Southern Lehigh Library funding. I know you all know, you've been given packets of information about how wonderful our library is, but there's a lot of people sort of saying libraries are obsolete, they're not, you know, they're not useful, or they can't get to the library. So this morning at nine o'clock, I went on the website and I went to my favorite app, Libby, which has tons of things to borrow. And at nine o'clock this morning from my living room, I could order, I could look, I could borrow, this is just what was available. Fifteen thousand books, four thousand magazines representing a thousand different titles. Who knew there were fifty-seven titles about cars, magazines? I had no idea, only seven on quilts that I like. Twenty-two hundred audiobooks. And then in addition to that, if you're not a reader, there's Hoopla, which has media on it, you know, movies, TV shows. There's fifty-two databases that you can do from home, from academic search for academics, of course, to the world book, the rest of us. So I just wanted to say I would really love to see your continued support of the library. You've been generous and the library needs it. And although these are free to us as Southern Lehigh, oh, and I just ordered the Wall Street Journal, going to be delivered to me, that's on the website. But it's free to us, but it's not free to the library. And so your continued support would be appreciated.
Thank you.
Nicole Dolan?
Hello, I just had a question when I was looking over the proposed Southern Lehigh School Board meeting calendar. I think I brought this up early on and things kind of switched over. From where I'm sitting, I'm still not sure I understand the difference between workshop and meeting. So when you get to that part of the agenda, if you can make it clear to the public, that would be helpful. From where I'm sitting, both of them have visitor comments, both of them have a change structure. I have seen voting happen at both the workshop and the meeting. So I'm not really sure what the point is. Maybe the discrepancy in my brain is that prior to that schedule, there had been sort of a staggered one meeting, one week, there was a workshop on topic A, and then there was school board meeting that did not cover topic A, and there was voting that happened. Then two weeks later, there would be workshop on topic B, and that is when afterwards, the workshop, I'm sorry, after the workshop, there would be a meeting that actually voted on topic As that were in the previous workshop. And that's what made the board the time to talk about a topic and then think about it and then vote on it. That's how I remember it happening in the past, in the recent past. So I understand that you need to digest the information that you're being presented before you feel ready to vote on it. But from where I'm seeing all the structure of them and seeing how there's workshop, meeting, workshop, meeting, meeting, workshop, it doesn't really seem like there's actually a difference when you can vote on anything at any time since there were visitor comments in both the workshop and a meeting. So if you could explain that and when you get to it, that'd be super helpful, thanks.
Thank you.
We have to register our name, right here?
Yeah, you do. Well, we can accommodate.
She voted in.
No, sorry. But you do need to sign it.
There is a device right as you walk in?
No, pass.
Why don't you speak first and sign it?
Patrick Moir.
What kind of exception tonight?
Also, long time resident, and my kids went to this school. My kids did not have computers like the other kids. My kids didn't have cars like the other kids. They went to the library. I'm here because I cannot believe this is the discussion to take the library off the budget or even reduce the budget of the library for all the kids in this community that use that library and the resources. All of us senior citizens are using that library also. We're not all wealthy, we're not all doctors. We need this library for truth and diversity and just to learn about everything that you can't get without what the normal people have or the rich people have. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You have others who have seats.
Okay. So let's go into the superintendent updates.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Ryanar. A few things tonight. First, on school safety. Generally, school safety is a topic for executive session, but in light of recent events, I thought I'd just take a moment to talk about the issue briefly in broad terms here at this meeting. First, Dr. Trinkle will be making an extensive report in executive session of the month for her yearly report as school safety advisor. So that's something coming up, we'll be able to talk in detail. But until then, just again broadly speaking, the best way for us to prevent violence in our schools is to look around and identify colleagues and classmates who are struggling and even lashing out and for us to intervene. We must intervene in ways that are compassionate, thoughtful, and at times forceful. And it is to those interventions of students and adults who are at risk that we will do the absolute most to limit the risk, the safety risks that are involved. And that's just not me saying it. Those are the conclusions of the final reported findings of the Safe School Initiative from the U.S. Secret Service. And it's also the findings of a school shooter or threat assessment perspective from the SBI Critical Incident Response Group. And so as we look at all aspects of how we respond to safety, certainly hardening facilities and all those things are in place, but we will get the most of focusing on digging around and finding people near to us who are in need and finding compassionate, thoughtful ways to reach out to them. And that will be the center of our focus moving forward to enhance the safety of our communities. So applause every person on that next topic.
I just, I have a question for maybe more for facilities. I know that when we did all of the facility study before, it was shortly after a rash of school shooting incidents. And we were making it a priority to make sure that our entrances were secure. And we noticed that some of our entrances weren't as secure as they should be. And I would ask just that the facilities committee in your workings and discussions that you keep that in mind and would keep that maybe at the top of the priority list to make sure that all of our entrances are secure.
Just very briefly, I'd like to comment on that. Thank you, Mike. I agree with that assessment. I was out as part of my job with law enforcement. I was at a symposium I held out in Harrisburg this weekend, parish last week, two days with the FBI. I put on by the FBI mainly, also the governor's task force and security, which I thought was pretty good. I also sit on the Safe Schools Task Force for the ICM, which I chair for Mr. Trent Martin. And I agree, and I think that was, well, your comments just now, I think, were echoed by, largely by the folks at that symposium. One thing that, to your point, I think some of this discussion would be better for executive session, just because we could talk about specifics. But one thing that I thought was interesting, the FBI behavioral, sort of the profilers that look at this, there was a couple of them that were speaking at the symposium. I indicated that they thought the use of Alastrol, which I think has been good, and I understand the idea behind it, but that their, at least the FBI's most recent thoughts about Alastrols is that they may be causing some additional issues. Maybe if you do think about it for a moment, to your point, if you have a troubled person that goes through some of these, in many ways, it shows how classrooms react. And it also might, for some of these, there's a certain profile for a lot of these individuals. And if they can imagine some of these things happening, and that's something that they want to see happen, then you could see where some of that might almost put some ideas in their heads or sort of have a negative impact. And reality is, and so their thought was that, you know, we have drills to, whether it's that type of drill or a fire drill or any other drill they have at school, you reinforce the kids that you listen to people with authority and follow, but maybe not to be so specific as that of Alastrols where you're simulating attacks on schools and things like that. Again, I think those are well-intended, and then there's a whole science that's built up around that. We all know that, and you can see certain benefits. But I thought that was interesting. I thought they made a pretty persuasive argument that perhaps on the whole, they might be doing a little bit more damage than they're not. So I would just ask the administration maybe to think about that going forward as we look at what kind of drills we're going to run for the next year. I know there's been a topic that's been talked about before. I just had that one thought of that stuff, but I would echo what you said, Mike, is what they said. Certainly harder in schools, you do other things, that's true. But in the end, if we can help with some of the mental health issues, help make sure people are identifying folks that appear to need some help, whether they're adults or students or anyone else associated with the schools, I think that's our best defense.
And I think to your point, which I absolutely is valid, is that we want to also send a message to our kids that they should not be fearful of coming to school. Our world and our lives are uncertain. In that context, our schools are safe. And statistically, our kids are safer in our buildings than outside them. And so the public response, the immense public response to tragic incidences conveys an outsized measure of real threats which causes great fear in the lives of some of our young people and their parents too. And so we have to communicate that we will work hard at safety. Life is uncertain in the world around us, but our kids are safe in school. So thank you, Mr. Kevin, for that. And any materials you've been able to gather, material I was very interested in.
There were some school, there wasn't too much in school. But I did think there's certain information we can share, actually, probably share through the Safe Schools Task Force, which we do usually every six months. And my guess is that in the fall, we'll be able to push some of that information.
Very good, thank you. So that's the end of school safety. I wanted to go on to the post-meeting calendar for the coming year. And this is just a discussion item, we're not acting on this tonight. But we do have a meeting scheduled on the second and fourth Mondays of the month as we have been doing. We have no meeting scheduled for July. And if that schedule makes sense, then I think we would be able to bring it to the board's approval later in this month. And certainly with respect to the workshop board meeting schedule, regarding advertising in the newspaper, there really is no difference. All of them are meetings for general purposes. Our effort, though, is to reserve the voting meeting of the month, the second meeting of the month, for action items. And when possible, to reserve the work session meeting, to work on emerging topics, prepare for the upcoming meeting, to have special presentations. And we reserve the right to vote in the work session because of timing issues. Let's say, for example, tonight, we could vote on all numbers of things, but we reserve the voting on the agenda simply for human resources because we've identified candidates we'd like to come here and we want to get them hired so they don't vote to other places. So work sessions generally are not for voting, but should an issue come up that requires the board's action or by acting on it in a timely way, we are advantaged by it, then in those instances, we will vote. And we will always have public comment, partly because we could be voting on an issue, but partly it's this discussion the board wants to hear from the public. And that effort is one to give the public the opportunity to speak on topics and work to it.
And if I might add to that, we've talked about making this revision. What happened to happen historically is the workshop meeting was happening prior to the board meeting. There was a lot of redundancy because the public was not attending the workshop. So people were repeating themselves and things were getting rehashed. I think this is a little more efficient way to communicate, to make sure that everybody's heard and it's inclusive. So we'll see how it goes, and we're open to public comments as we move forward.
And in the work session being so short, the other way, if we had a presentation about budget for Mr. Pepe, for example, and it was not constrained to a limited timeframe, but rather had the opportunity to more fully investigate an important topic as opposed to kind of rushing through because we had an executive session, a work session, a voting session on every night. So again, we can change at any time, but I think there's some merit to the approach of taking.
With regard to the calendar, just could I ask a question or have a comment? The, there have been discussions in the past, and I forget which entity changed its meeting dates, whether it was the township, now we're reading campus three townships. But I believe the most frequent conflict between Southern Lehigh School Board meetings and township meetings are with Upper Salkin Township crossed street down here. I was just wondering if there had been any continued conversation or collaboration. When last we left it, we were hopeful that there would be some conversation between township and school and perhaps some we could negotiate, one of us could possibly see about moving our meetings so that community members didn't have to choose between attending a township meeting that was discussing a topic of great importance to, you know, individuals in the community on the same night as perhaps a school board meeting, which was also of great importance. Specifically, a great example is when there have been a lot of meetings about development of land and open land. That is something that impacts both schools from a population standpoint and a taxation standpoint, but also the community from an open space and space utilization standpoint. And some folks really had to choose, you know, which meeting they were going to attend that night in order to support our school and our community and everything else.
Are they all on the same night?
They are on the same night, yes. But I was just wondering if there were any conversations that had happened?
No, we've been having, I think, great relations with the Salkin group.
Yes, I agree, I agree.
This topic has not come up. Have you heard the main discussion? Also, this is.
There are also times when they, MJ, I know, I know you want to, MJ, please stop. I know you want to be efficient. No, wait, I'm not, please do not interrupt. If you would like to abandon my speaking, if you would like to please stay, I'm willing if you could keep it shorter, or if you, I was explaining the problem and situation. MJ. That would be amenable to my schedule, and that would be great.
I don't know. It would be a no for me.
Is that when the township meetings start?
Township is the second.
So what do you think about the first and third?
We can't, we can't do that because someone from this board has to sit on, the first and the third Mondays is a great idea. But someone from this board has to sit on CLIU board meetings, and those happen every third Monday of the month. And I'm the rep, so that's why I know that. I sit on that board.
Okay, Wednesday? Thursday? I think the Saturday morning at ten o'clock. Can we go to the township and see if maybe they have some leeway tonight? Maybe they can do the first.
We can do that.
Maybe they can do the first.
Can I ask Dr. Mayans about the township and see if they have options?
Maybe they can do the first and third Mondays on the Tuesday for second. Well, thank you for bringing it up, I really appreciate it.
Thanks.
And then the next topic in my report is the Southern Lehigh Library. And I want to, I hope Mr. Pepe has been following this very closely. But we become aware that Lower Salkin Township is requesting to join the Southern Lehigh Library. Lower Salkin is currently affiliated with and provides financial support to the Heller Town Library. And this topic has arisen among many of the local agencies, townships that support the library. The Southern Lehigh Library Board must make a decision whether or not to accept Lower Salkin and the financial support that is associated with that acceptance. And currently, Southern Lehigh School District makes annual contributions to the library and has representation on the library board. And so I raise that just in the event that the board wanted to take a position or further investigate. It is an issue that has come up recently in discussions in municipalities. I simply want to take this occasion to present to the board their consideration.
I would like to have Mr. Pepe give us a brief overview from his discussion or his attendance to the meeting and the information he has maybe enlightening to this decision.
First of all, can you hear that?
How's that?
Wow.
Okay.
I think it's still picking me up, Ken. I think all the energy was. Now I got it. All right. Okay, so it was a very interesting meeting. I was asked as one of the partner groups to attend. The meeting was attended by Lower Salkin Township, Lower Salkin Township, Upper Salkin Township, Cooper's Borough Bureau via speakerphone, and representatives from the Southern Lehigh Public Library, the library director, Sager, was there, and Hussein, president of the library board via speakerphone. And basically, it was a discussion about the interest from Lower Salkin to pull away from the relationship they have in Heller Town and join up with Upper Salkin. Now, for the most part, we simply just, you know, sat to listen to the stakeholders that were there and what was being discussed. Of importance was a fifty thousand dollar donation that was made to the Upper Salkin Library by Lower Salkin in attempts to show their appreciation and also knowing that they're looking to solidify the relationship. And with joining the relationship, they're looking to bring approximately a hundred thousand dollars plus per year, which is their funding amount that they currently support Heller Town. From the board's perspective, I simply stated that, you know, first of all, we value the relationship. That's not even a question in the importance of my work. However, given our budget constraints and the fact that we've run six of the last seven years in a deficit, there was certainly a discussion was brought up about, A, are we required to fund? And B, do we need to continue to fund at that level? Can we in fact make a reduction and/or suspend that contribution until such time as we feel we're right side up when it comes to the budget? I shared with the board some of the history of the commitment. And the current budget has seventy-one thousand four hundred dollars in alignment for that contribution. And as I stated at the draft budget, I would go ahead and continue to support a cool of the budget and give the board the opportunity to determine that they want to continue to fund at that level or reduce or suspend at this period. And those funds will simply be redirected to some other higher priority of need in the budget. And that's pretty much where we stand. In the last decade, I think it's been about six hundred fifty-six thousand dollars that this board has contributed to the library over that time period. And understand, when you simply look at the numbers like any other budget, there's revenue sources, they receive money from each of the partners that I spoke about, and a larger share from Upper Salkin, I think it's around two hundred thousand dollars. So that's pretty much hopefully a good update to the board, the ultimately supported decision.
So, Mr. Pepe, a question. In terms of other school districts and their public libraries, is it a common practice in the Lehigh County for districts to give to the library? Or is it more a township or borough responsibility in terms of other practice in other districts?
It is becoming less supported by schools. At a recent Lehigh County meeting, more than half of the business minister's right question, whether or not the district supports the library, said, no, they do not. Some had in the past, some still do. And again, it's a, you know, borough by borough decision or school district. Right, school district.
And in regards to Lower Salkin, what's the rationale for moving away from the Heller Town Library, which is kind of in the center of the area, and coming to a library that's well outside, well, at least outside of the majority of the population?
Yeah, there was a letter that was forwarded from the counselor representing Lower Salkin, Tredwell. And basically, at the meeting, they just simply stated the fact that they're not happy with the relationship they have with Heller Town. And everybody holds the Upper Salkin Library in high esteem, and they just feel given the opportunity, and especially since they're contiguous, that they would like to look at coming over. And these are discussions apparently they've been having since January or earlier. So I don't know if that helps you in any order, beyond that, I don't know.
Luke, sorry, a sec. So you mentioned a fifty thousand dollar donation. Were there any strings attached to that donation? Was that discussed?
Not that it was shared in the meeting. It was shared in the meeting, it was simply stated, it was towards their open hands program to do what they want, but that's all that was discussed.
Was that donation accepted by the Southern Lehigh Library?
As reported, as reported, they've been holding the check, but they haven't cashed it.
Fifty thousand dollar check, it hasn't been cashed.
Correct.
Did they give a reason for why? Your mic didn't, I don't think. Did they give a reason for why they did not cash the check?
Not there on the way.
What Salkin Valley School District is made up of, what municipality, Heller Town, Lower Salkin, is there another township where's that? Does anybody know?
It's just Heller Town, of course.
So I assume then the students of Lower Salkin, which would be substantial, would also benefit from the Salkin Library. And of course, our school district pays, but not for you, say, at seventy-one thousand, to help support the library for purposes of, I guess, our students using it. You'd think potentially one of this Salkin Valley currently providing monies to the Heller Town Library and/or would we expect that Salkin Valley will provide monies to Upper Salkin like seems to be somewhat expected of us? Any idea about that, Mr. Pepe?
Now, again, the only thing that I got from the meeting and what was contained in the letter to council is that Lower Salkin Township's request to the library board to accept the township as a municipal funding partner and for the library to provide full services included, but not limited to the provision of library cards to residents of Lower Salkin beginning 2023. As you're aware, the township's partnership with the borough of Heller Town and the Heller Town area library is coming to a close. So what they made clear is that they have no intention of staying with Heller Town. And simply they're looking for a good partner, and they felt that Upper Salkin would be a good fit. And ultimately, if the library board, you know, via through the voting members that one represents this board, determined they did not want that relationship to go forward, then they would take their funding and seek another, you know, trying partner. But they do not feel they're going to stay with Heller Town.
And that would be an unfortunate loss for us given our own financial distress. And that would be an unfortunate loss for us given our own financial distress. So, we have a library representative, I believe.
How long since that term? Until December 23.
The December?
Twenty-three, 2023.
What's the status of Lower Milford? I thought in my memory that Lower Milford at some point either stopped funding or have they picked back up funding? Does anybody know what they? My concern about all this, I think, you know, having to keep my mind on too much about the issue of Lower Salkin joining, it seems like a generally good idea if everybody's pulling their weight, which is why I'm concerned about the school district. And I mean, we'd essentially be servicing a large portion of their school district, just as Upper Salkin Library services our school district, which you guys get behind us, our payment. And I just think there's certain equities that we want to seek amongst all the various municipalities. And if half over, three quarters of the population of the school district in Salkin Valley are now going to be accessing our libraries, then there's nothing. And yet, suddenly I'd expect to pay $71,000, just like I'm a little concerned about what Lower Milford's contribution is. I just think all these entities, there should be some fair distribution of the cost. And that would be my concern about the arrangement of Lower Salkin coming in. Otherwise, I think it would be a big negative. I don't, I'm not necessarily always a bad idea. It seems like either no farther away from Upper Salkin Library than probably closer to the moment the mass majority of residents of Lower Milford, I would suspect, so.
Logistically, it makes sense, Mr. Pepe. I also quite understand that exactly it's $50,000 a contributing now and it would be over $100,000 per year.
But if Upper Salkin takes it, what?
Here are the numbers. Frankly, Southern Lehigh School District is number two on the highest donors list for the library. Number one is Upper Salkin at $203,000.
What's the total budget, do you know?
The total input is $375,000. I think the total revenue slash expenditure is somewhere around $475 or so thousand dollars a year. But the fact of the matter is that State Aid, $58,000, Coopersburg, $23,000, Lower Milford, $20,000, Upper Salkin, $71,000, or Southern Lehigh School District, $71,400, and then Upper Salkin Township at $203,500. So that's the breakdown. So the Southern Lehigh School District is the second largest contributor at this point to that, just so you know.
So a big proposal might be to get to the equity issue around contributions is to look at the district producing this contribution and lay it at $50,000 to the potential $100,000 per year, correct?
Yeah.
So we could save a little bit of money but still contribute potentially $25,000.
Right.
As a core example. How do people feel about that? And what can we get our district representative to make that proposal?
Well, I've asked around to a number of people. And I talked to quite a few people that are with the library, are using it. And that $50,000 check that Lower Salkin is offering, from my understanding, has yet to be cashed because whatever happens between Lower Salkin and Heller Town, there's a lot of battle up there. And there's, I'm going to use the word because I can't think of it, a lot of gameplay going on. And I think that just from the conversations I've had, it sounds like the Southern Lehigh, our library, is nervous that there are a cog in whatever game is being played, which is because there are definitely some things going on over there. And which is why I think that they haven't yet cashed that check.
Things going on aren't facts. Things going on are things going on without details. But it's hard to make a decision based on things going on.
Sure. So, there's that matter of the $50,000. And then you're counting on Lower Salkin continuing to contribute this money to our library when they can change that and pull out at any time. So if there is all of a sudden a change of representation, that could change. And now they pull out, and now our library is left in the dust because Lower Salkin is doing something different now. Or they can change their mind, they can pull out, they can do whatever they want.
Well, so can we. It's a board decision, both parties.
But then if people just all change their minds, then the library is left with zero funding, and now it's closed, and our senior citizens have no regard.
I think that's a little dramatic. We're looking at how to compromise and how to make this work, both the district and in terms of our deficit issues, as well as, you know, build a collaboration with Lower Salkin, which I think in terms of proximity, logistically, it's pretty close.
This makes a lot of sense. It's a way for a
Another part of the problem, like Jeff just said, is that if, Jeff just made mention, now a lot of their kids are going to start coming to our library. While the funding that they gave us will cover what the library has to do to meet those kids' needs, how are they still meeting our kids' needs without help from us?
Well, I think there's an efficiency in numbers. Does anybody else have any comments on this?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I think the library is one of the most clear resources that we as a school district fund, that folks who do not have kids in classrooms can take advantage of. I think LTRC is another. I also think that good communities, we're talking about safety and security earlier this evening. We're talking about building community and building relationships. Libraries, that's where that happens. I think that my concern is, it sounds like there will be, if this Lower Salkin funding goes through and if that merger occurs, it sounds like there will be more individuals using the Southern Lehigh Library from a circulation standpoint. And for members of our community who don't have kids in school and for members of our community who do have kids in school, that's going to make resources harder to come by. And I would think, it seems to me that you would need increased funding for an increased population circulation. So I don't see how the efficiencies could be so great that if we remove our funding, it would be made up for. I think what I'd like to say is, just from a research and from an information perspective is, since this is the one thing that senior citizens and folks, seniors who don't have kids in schools, what portion of our taxation budget, for instance? Like what tenth of a mil or what percentage of what we are taxing, but which is being used to fund that library? And that's going directly into the pockets of folks who are not utilizing our schools. Same thing with LTRC. Wonderful opportunities, and they could only use more funding as years go by because more and more folks are attending. It seems to me more monies are needed for more, because I'd just like to learn more.
Oh, I agree with you. I think that not, you can't do this without utilization data. So I have no idea what utilization data on the library currently is. Or is it going to be one?
And I don't think we'll have that until a potential merger occurs.
They did provide, the library did provide some metrics on children and adult usage, at least by children's programs and all of that. And that's where we saw that if you look at the numbers, there's a third of them are pre-school, a third are in school, and the other third are adults if you're just by rule of thumb, take those numbers. So that's one part of it. And there were some others as well. I don't have that in front of me. But, you know, probably we do need some additional metrics from the library. And, you know, by rights, they would need to start looking at a scenario with, I don't know the population of Lower Salkin, but it's thousands, you know, how much of an impact it has on it. And that's their job to do an analysis of that. But the fact of the matter is that, you know, as Mr. Pepe says, as we're reviewing our budget deficit and working to get to a balanced budget over years, it doesn't happen in one year because it's, that's where taxing comes in. But, you know, we need to come up with, I think, some discussions. We can have a lead role. But I think the real lead roles would be Upper Salkin Township and Lower Milford and Coopersburg as a combined municipality entity that's taxing and understand what their thoughts are. And then also work with the library and our representative on behalf of us to provide guidance and then work this through. That's the way I see it. We have to get more information.
We're at least 25% of the budget, so I do think we're stakeholder in that significant.
No, we're not stakeholder. I just wanted to echo kind of what you said, Stephen. But I just wanted to remind everyone that we fund five libraries, do we not? In each one of our buildings, and we do a great job. The library we were talking about is a community library. And I think a community library is a wonderful thing. And we certainly appreciate everything that everyone spoke to. But I'm just, I'm still, I struggle to understand the school district's role in our budget when operating in a deficit for six out of the last seven years.
Especially when there's an opportunity for collaboration, that's efficient, you know.
Yeah.
I agree.
And certainly, if there's a $50,000 donation, I could see, would you, if you could move it to, you know, reducing our, at least this year, while we're trying to catch up in our budget, reducing by that $50,000, it sounds like a very reasonable, doesn't affect the library's funding this year. It really doesn't.
In fact, it moves the library's ownership a little bit.
Yeah, I think that's true, Dr. Mayhew, you're a good point. And I am an advocate for all libraries, and certainly can't point, I mean, you are a good point. The community library, but to your point, you know, we don't have a high school librarian in this district, right? And we don't have one, which is pretty astonishing. And I'm trying to advocate for one every year. I think that position's been capped now for, I would guess, about 78 years at this point. But to your point, I mean, we're paying $71,000 for a community library, yet we don't have a librarian for our own high school, which, you know, just, again, things to think about. And I'm not saying with our budget that we have the resources to have a high school library. And I'm certain we'd love to have one some day in the future. But to your point, we're sort of going without, within our own district, and funding at a pretty high cost for the community library. Again, I'm not necessarily saying against that. I use that library, I think it's a wonderful resource. But to your point, we have limited resources. We've cut our budget. We don't have a librarian, we cut her for that very reason and never replaced her. And so we made hard decisions within our own district, in our own resources. And so the question is, you know, as the library takes on potentially more funding sources, you know, again, we look at the equities of how it's funded and what our role in that is and whether some of those savings potentially there could go towards getting a librarian back here, which I, my opinion, would no doubt have a greater impact on our own students, which is our main mission, potentially of that. So I'm not saying we cut the library. I'm just saying I think it is a worthy topic of discussion. To everyone's point, I think it's worth hearing greater information about going forward because libraries are important. Our high school library is important. And I think we need to, but I also recognize, as Dr. Mayhew and Mr. Pepe are, we're tasking them with closing a deficit. I'm talking about, you know, adding a librarian or, and we're talking about, you know, the cost of what we're doing at Upper Salkin.
And we made a decision fairly quickly, so, because this is a budget issue for the president.
Just to give you guys a little bit of info, because I took the numbers real quick. The State Aid portion of their budget is 15%. Our contribution is 18.9%. Upper Salkin is the largest contributor at 54%, or $203,000. Coopersburg is $23,000, Lower Milford is $20,000. So what I find interesting is the representation. We have one individual representing the board. Upper Salkin really has the decision-making, because we have four of the seven trustees on the library board. And that's with the township. So, and the whole purpose of the meeting was really to kind of test the orders and get some kind of understanding from the partners as to whether or not there was interest in accepting the long-term partnership, which they presented as long-term, and with that, the additional funding. But as far as what's before us currently is the art budget and the $50,000 that is now sitting with the library board, which is above beyond their current funding. So if there were any reduction from the contribution, that would ultimately be offset, you know, provided they were to cash the check and utilize it to support their funding. But again, the, you know, the level of support and the question about the board supporting was never any question. If that's helpful.
That's very helpful. Compromises are always worth considering. So Mike, if he had this board, you know, our budget presentation for final vote, consider looking at reductions to $25,000 for the library funding, given the fact that there's a $50,000 check sitting?
And again, I would not claim a vote. I'm going to report on the budget tonight.
Okay.
And I would be the first to assess the budget. I would get to that, but that we adopt the budget as is.
Okay.
Certainly, that decision does not need to be made tonight.
Okay.
And we also want people more inclined to consider the impact.
So we have a stark deficit. If we decide to avoid any expense, instead of reduce the stark deficit, or reduce the end of your debt actually. So I don't think there's a need to immediately take action. I agree with Mr. Pepe on that.
Yeah, the other thing we have to consider too is some of the building repair capital issues too that are coming in unexpectedly.
And she happens on that point with our next topic.
Okay, so where are we going to visit this again? How are we going to address this over the long period?
Perhaps we could ask, perhaps we could ask the library to put together a business case for accepting Lower Salkin and a business case for rejecting Lower Salkin and develop their recommendation to help inform us in our decision-making because we are at a disadvantage in not having that data or insight for us to do it. And so perhaps we could reach out and say, "Help us justify making a contribution by developing a business case surrounding what actually proposed, and also the consequences of those actions," you know, because there are, at least it seems, viable alternatives being proposed by others. And then that information could come back to us, perhaps in advancing the meeting. We'd be happy to share with the board, this board. And then that will help inform the discussion next time if the library would be amenable to that request.
So we would in essence supply a, let's say, a bulleted list of our requests to the library and things that we would like, so that we can make an educated decision. And we would supply that, right?
That's a thought.
And just keep in mind, ultimately, just as this board has all autonomy, so does the library board. So the library board has to determine whether or not we're going to accept that relationship or reject that relationship, right? We have one representative who sits on the floor, who we could, as a board, you could determine what you would like that individual to carry forward. But that's why I look at the membership to let you know that depending on the other players, that decision might be taken, one way or the other. But we can determine the funding part, so.
The two of us together, Mr. Pepe, may develop those questions. Does that make sense? Do you share any response you get with the board?
Thank you.
And then, moving to facilities, and certainly members of the county committee can act this way. Just an update, proposals have been received from Odano, Necorado, and also Duay Engineering, to provide engineering services to address the external brick wall issue of intermediate school. The proposals will be presented to the facility committee tomorrow night, and a report and recommendation will be brought back to the full board for consideration in our meeting on June 27th. And we're also extremely pleased to report that six highly responsible vendors submitted proposals for the stadium project today, which was the deadline. We will review and titillate the proposals and present our initial findings to the committee tomorrow evening. Significant discussion must occur both with the committee and the full board before any action can be contemplated. I note that this very positive response, I think, is an endorsement of committees of the committee's approach to do state contracting, design, build, because we, again, we have a very excellent response. Of course, all options are remain open as we try to navigate the best path forward on this project. Finally, Mr. Suma, who are both joining us here tonight. Mr. Miller is being recommended as our new high school principal, and Mr. Suma is being recommended as our new director of technology. Both gentlemen have demonstrated a record of success, and we're so pleased to have him join us in our work and service to our students and community. And while not new, also, Mr. Ken Moore is here tonight, our long-serving representative to Lehigh Carbon Community College, who also is being recommended for an extension of his distinguished service at Lehigh College. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Could I ask them, the gentleman to stand up for me?
I'm Chris Suma.
Welcome. Thank you.
Looking forward to working with you.
Could I quickly just go back to the facilities for just a minute? I didn't realize you were going to jump off there.
Sure. No, I'm sorry.
My, just, just a comment that, I believe at the last meeting, at this meeting, I've, I've enjoyed attending facilities meetings. I mean, staying at last general board meeting for the general board exec, but also for the facilities exec session. I know there have been facilities exec sessions, because there was one on the night, one of the meetings I attended, so I'd left, and then there was an exec session for the committee. I don't believe those have been announced or described. I believe our last exec session just said we had exact, but didn't give a description of what was described in the board exec. And I believe the last couple of facilities exec sessions just haven't been announced or explained. If we could just, I'm, I'm not asking for it to be tonight, but if we could just make a note and make a record of those, and please announce the exec sessions that have been happening and the topics they've covered, both facilities and hours. That's, I just didn't have, didn't have a record of it. I appreciate it. And I know it's hard to keep track of, because we don't, let's just hear it.
If I recall, though, we, it was announced that there was an executive session due to legal matters regarding the, some facilities matter.
I would be certain of announced them. It was my current impression they were announced, but I could easily stand for it.
And there was another one on the, on the calendar, on the school calendar, that's the exec session, I thought, from a scheduling standpoint, for tonight. I just appreciate it. Thanks. Just came to mind when I was looking for minutes.
I, I want to speak to, we will be having a facilities meeting tonight, or tonight, tomorrow night, Tuesday. We're resuming first and third Tuesdays each month, and those have been advertised. And I'm hoping they're going to still be held here. Yes? Okay. And I do believe that both of those execs plus the continuation of the full board of the exec was announced in the meeting following.
That's my recollection.
Yeah. We will always look back to minutes.
Tomorrow, second. We'll make sure that it's in the minutes, and thank you.
Sorry, what?
Tomorrow, second.
It was advertised.
Sorry.
No, no, we're off our cycle because of just interviews and circumstances.
Okay.
The, the meeting tomorrow was advertised legally. Meeting, the executive session will announce it. And after tomorrow, we're going back to our more traditional rotation of meetings.
That's what I thought, but.
You're a hundred percent correct.
Exceptions at first and third tomorrow on the fourteenth of January. And I also think it's quiet day, we will be having a facilities meeting soon.
Okay.
Mr. Pepe. Okay, on the budget, budget information has gotten slightly better since we, since we adopted the draft budget.
I'm going to stop.
How's that?
That's good. Thank you.
Sorry, I had to turn it off. So I said the budget information has gotten slightly better from the draft budget that was adopted. I just handed out the same sheet that was in the PowerPoint presentation, that, and I would draw your focus to the projected twenty-two, twenty-three column. The original deficit at the time we approved the draft budget was projected, was projected in one million eight-hundred-twenty-nine thousand one hundred and twenty deficit. That's been reduced to one million six-hundred-twenty-two thousand five forty-nine. So the delta is about two-hundred-six thousand five seventy-one. And basically, what's changed is we received a little bit more revenue on the, on the assistance we get from gambling monies from the cover five-eleven. So the minor changes that have happened as far as we have a position, but we also have a producer position actually in business office, so they kind of, you know, work, it worked their way out. And we're going to be able to bring forward the budget the way we have. On, on the June twenty-seventh meeting, you will have the typical board adoption resolution to adopt the budget and all of the items that need to be fixed, such as the receipts estimated from local sources will be fifty-six million three hundred eighty-seven thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. In addition to that, the tax rate will be established, the military at seventeen point two-five ninety-five. And along with that, all of the taxation items under Act five-eleven, which includes the local tax enabling act, so it'll be the EIT and the LSG, the local service tax, and then the other, the other portion that's going to be in front of you is the homestead and farmstead exclusion. And all of those numbers have been worked out as in previous years, have not changed dramatically. And that will all be put forward for your approval. And that's pretty much it. There's not a lot of big movement in, from what we've already covered in subsequent meetings and previous meetings. Any questions to that? So now I'm going to move on, Madam President, to district insurance update. So again, like everything that we have to look at each year, rather than just simply renewing or accepting the renewal estimates that we get from brokers, we went back and challenged different brokers on different numbers and, you know, looking at where things are and/or whether or not we felt that they've done a good job in preparation for the renewal. So I'll start with the commercial property. A broker there, HMK Insurance, has been a broker for a number of years in the district. They're out of Bethlehem, and the carrier that you're currently with is Utica National. Anyone who's been on the board for a number of years will know that they switched to Utica National from Liver Mutual probably about three years ago and secured pretty good rates. I think the tell here is it's a seven percent total increase, and based on the market, that's actually better, because the market trend is ten point six percent increase. If you look at the overall premium of one hundred and forty-two thousand nine oh three and benchmark it against the twenty-nineteens premium, which was one hundred and forty-five thousand one ninety-eight, we're still actually ahead of the game. So even though it's an increase this year of seven percent based on inflation, legal abuse with insurance, that is one of the major impacts, and cybersecurity is driving rates everywhere. So that was the three biggest movers there. Overall, I recommend renewing that line of coverage. And if there's any questions, I'm going to move on to the next. So the next area is workers' compensation. The district, we are part of a consortium, school district insurance consortium out of Lanfield, Petalina. It's a self-insured school, and the executive director, Tom, Andrew Lucci, was very instrumental in helping me, giving, providing me a lot of comparative data. In addition, I took the added step of going back to our property casualty broker and saying, you know, could you offer the district coverage in the area of workers' comp, and what would that look like? So the result was a five, a five percent total estimated increase of four thousand three hundred thirty-six, representing a total maximum contribution of eighty-nine thousand based on potential discount. The comparables were up as high as, you know, one hundred and fifty-one thousand with credits down to one hundred and twenty-six, or one hundred and forty-two with potential credits down to one hundred and seven. So what it did is verify and validate that we are with the right group for that insurance, and we're going to renew that and stay with the group. We also received a surplus check about a month or so ago in the amount of thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and nine. And what's interesting is how they come up with the ratio, and it's based on royalty, safety, and performance. So that tells me we're, we're a low moderate. We're doing really well as far as our insurance there. And the last area for insurance was student accident. The student accident current broker is Bollinger at Lippenee, New Jersey, and the carrier is Zurich. Initially, they tried to pass a ten percent increase on the loss. I talked to them that that was just not going to happen. The, the market, if they would have to check comparables for mutual, Omoponk, and then. When I challenged the broker to be better, we changed the broker. We ended up coming back after a couple iterations of flack. So we will not have an increase this year. However, I will plan to look at not just checking the market, but the broker next year.
You come, you're a great lawyer.
Right.
So that's pretty much it in the world of insurance.
How long have we been in the cap for the workers' comp?
I don't know how long we've been in the, in the front.
Because it's a long-term.
Yeah.
Strategy, and there's always the opportunity to save money for one year. But if you look at, look at it over time, it kind of turns out better. Continuation. So thank you, Paul. That's excellent.
No problem. The consortium is very nice to work with also.
I like.
Yeah, they're very, very receptive, and they're on top of anything working with us, and our employees.
Is it the same consortium that we deal insurance through? Say, insurance, health insurance through, is it?
No.
Okay, different consortium.
Correct. You had carbon union. That's a statewide consortium, that's the isolate, they've been, been at for a while.
Okay, so we are now, we would like to have our human resources director present the motions for.
That's right.
Number six.
We're taking them all together?
Yeah. Go ahead.
So we have eleven items under HR for vote tonight. We have admin recommendations, certifying employee recommendations, classifying employees recommendations, amongst other things. So this is a voting item, so we'll be voting this evening.
Okay, so I need a motion.
So moved.
Okay, let's, let's slow down. Ray Marucci did ask, we slow down. Did you capture that item, right?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Do we have any comments or questions on the HR appointments and resignations? All in favor?
I.
Is anyone opposed?
I just.
You're going to, you're going to do that, you're going Ross.
And I just had to come in. So again, I just wanted to commend the administration for their work in HR and recruitment and the ability to make things happen and have outstanding candidates.
Well, we understand your reserve prior to being appointed. Now that you have been, perhaps, Mr. Suma or Mr. Miller, do you have any thoughts and care to offer, or just words of welcome?
Come to the podium.
Oh, very good.
You have to check out the technology. It does work, as I can predict pretty well. So I just want to thank the interview team, the committee, the board members, everyone that I have met with. It's truly an honor to be here. It'll be a challenge for all of us, but I really will be looking forward to creating relationships with everybody across the board and really working to move the district collectively together in all areas of technology. So thank you. It's really a pleasure to be here, and I really look forward to our next steps.
Thank you. Just after Mr. Suma's statements, I would like to thank the administration, the board that brought the process. I'm elated to be here, be part of the district and take on the leadership role. I know there's some challenges, but I'm excited to work from I was getting some students in the process. I'm excited to be in the building, help other individuals grow, and help the district report all their challenges, and have someone I'd be a gentleman, Lehigh County. So thank you.
Finally, we should note that, Mr. Jordan, tonight's your last meeting.
One more.
One more, okay, all right.
Don't, don't take that from me.
Could I just add that we had one retirement senior, you say, who has been with our district. I, I have no idea how many years. I mean, probably a decade, over a decade, maybe two. So we just wish her the best and thank you for contributing to our suddenly active account.
Well, thank you.
That was the only one I saw. Am I missing someone on here? I thought I only saw one retiring.
Okay, with that, we need a motion to accept Mr. Pepe for as the Southern Lehigh School District Dominator for the Board of Trustees position at Lehigh Carbon Community College. This is a long term, which will extend until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. Do you have a motion?
So, move. Second.
Do we make comments or questions?
I appreciate, Dr. Mayhew said a moment ago, Mr. Moore has been a long time, a member there, serving our interests here at Southern Lehigh on the board. And I've always been very impressed that he, that he gave us updates. I know he's very involved. I know he's a great advocate for LTRIC. I think he's represented our interests very well over the years, and I look forward to having him do so in the future. And of course, he's married to a former school board member as well, Patty Moore, who served with it, with myself and some of us, some of us here on the board now, a couple of years back. So he's very involved in public education and, and LTRIC, and quite frankly, Lehigh County. He's had quite an interest in time over, I know, government relations in Lehigh County. So for all those reasons, I certainly appreciate him stepping forward, and I think he'll do a big, continue a big job for looking out for our interests on the LTRIC board going forward.
I would like to add that we had a really good candidate to consider as a committee as we, we met the folks who expressed interest. So it was a pretty tough decision. And I do know that he had, Mr. Moore has contributed quite a bit, but there are some challenges ahead, which he has agreed to continue to work with us to solve. And he will be setting a meeting with the newer board members, so we get a little bit more familiar with LTRIC and its operations. So thank you, Mr. Moore, for that. Any other comments, Mr. Miller?
No, you just, just said it all. No, I just wanted to thank the other applicants and let us not forget them who volunteered for the process.
Okay, with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Congratulations, Mr. Moore. Would you like to say something?
Very excited. I'd like to thank all of you very much for appointing me to the position. I am looking forward to working with all of you in the next six years. Does this mean I'm going to live for another six years?
It's a good one.
And I appreciate that, and looking forward to it very much. And thank you very much for all you do.
Do we have any visitor comments?
Hi, I'm Carol Evans. I didn't sign in, because I didn't think I had anything to say. But now that I've listened to all of you, I do have some things to say. I'd like to know what the school is doing for the training of the teachers and the staff for the safety of our children. What programs do you have set up so that they are trained, not just closing doors and learning about this and that? Do you have a program set up just to train them?
We don't typically answer questions or take questions during public comment, but we will take your questions. but we will take your questions. And potentially the next meeting, I believe, Mr. Dr. May and will be, Dr. Trent will be presenting more information regarding this.
Okay.
And could you please sign in?
I will, but I have another comment. I've been a resident of Upper Salken for 47 years. Our children came here as babies. We came here because of the education that Southern Lehigh was known for. And through all the years, that's what we felt was important to the community, the education of everyone. And if you go to the library, and I'm going to go back to the library, you'll see a lot of moms with little tiny children getting books and doing all these special things that the library does for preschool that maybe parents can't afford to go to nursery school. And that brings these children into the school system with some kind of educational background. And to me, that's really important about the library. The other thing is where you spend your money shows what you think is important, and that's who you are. So please consider reconsidering who you are about the library. Thank you.
We are adjourned. We have to put a board member.